Everyone, please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Esberry Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 22, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now onto items to be presented. Our first presentation is regarding 614 Cookman Avenue Redevelopment Plan Amendment.
Good evening, folks. My name is Beth McManus. I'm one of the city's planning consultants. And I'm just going to give a very brief overview, an introduction for the presentation that you're about to see. So this evening, we have a presentation about a potential change or a proposed change to the CBD redevelopment plan for the site at 614 Cookman Avenue, although it also does have frontage on Lake Avenue. We're going to hear about a proposal to have a portion of that building occupied by a company referred or known as Vidia that does recording space and some other complementary uses. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to the folks that are going to do the presentation.
If I may, Andrew Perry, the head of 614 Cookman LLC property, this is our application, lot 2404, lot 6. If the board is unaware, it is a street lot, meaning it goes right from Cookman over to Lake Avenue. It's somewhat unusual, plus it is a street lot. Obviously, it's in the CBD redevelopment area. It's subject to Cookman Avenue Detail Court Regulations as well as CBD Use Regulations. Part of the building that, but part of it that was on Cookman Ave, subject to that, Cookman Avenue Detail Court Regulations, back part on Lake Ave, subject to CBD Use. Reason why here is we have a proposed tenant, Vidia, that is looking to lease approximately 14,000 square feet of building for this business. It will have in there, as indicated, the proposed apartment amendment, recording and production space, sound and music, video recording and production, national universal space, and a music store, great commercial activity. What I'm going to do is call up Lloyd Obama. He's going to provide some brief oversight into what he's going to be planning to get out of the facility, also. And what do I do? Yeah, I'm going to work the computer, work through the slides. If you can start first, your association with me.
Yeah, so I started Vidia 10 years ago. You know, grew up around here, working in North and North, went to Brooklyn College. Been in the music business, especially my entire life, starting at 18. Thirty-two started Vidia, about $3,000, built it up, to it's now a $400,000 company, doing about 130 employees. We have offices currently in Beverly Hills, Dubai, London, Lagos, Nigeria, and hopefully at Red Park. Of the 120 employees, we have about 50 to 60 in this location, all, you know, working during the day. We're currently in Bellwars, who have moved to like more music count. And right now, you know, our primary business is that we do distribution of music, music videos, and content.
Now, the interestingness of Red Park is based upon the history of Red Park and music, and also continuing what is going on with Red Park in terms of the music scene that we have and written there in addition to planning to further production, yeah, music recording studios. Correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I went to my first concert at Stonehoney, you know, and yeah, so it's just the idea of like, you know, now that I'm in a better position to kind of get back and kind of help, you know, build the legacy of, you know, build my legacy at Red Park and kind of everything here.
What I wanted to do is go through the different wards since working Cookman Ave, where you would be occupied space. Just describe, to the left you have Cookman Ave, to the right you have Lake Ave. Just a little bit of the layout and ambidextrous space, the thing that they're going to utilize.
Yeah, so I mean, the space is essentially conceptualized as like, you know, what I would call like, weed work kind of means cellhouse kind of thing. So it's mostly like a collaborative space where people come in and have access to like, you know, a music facility that they wouldn't otherwise have access to. When they first come in, there's a record store. So one of the things we do as a company is that we do distribution of vinyl records. We put out, you know, Usher, we were the interior company that had Usher at Supple this year. We put out the Purple soundtrack. We're doing, you know, the remastering, remixing, and distribution of Above the Rim and things like that. So vinyl is kind of a big thing for us, especially as it gets more popular. So we thought, why not build a vinyl record store right off of Cookman there? And then if you come in, you know, the concept is, you know, there would be a keycard access into the facility, and the facility, you know, individuals would basically be able to pay like, what I would call like a, almost like a gym membership, so like a nominal $20 a month kind of thing. Then you have the ability to kind of work within the facility, have a desk. And also, if you want to kind of use, you'd have credits to kind of use the different kind of studios. So it could be a podcast studio, you know, it could be a recording studio. It could be something where you're doing editing or photography. So, you know, one of the things that inspired me is that, you know, my office currently is at Bellwars. It's actually the second tenant at Bellwars, believe it or not. And, you know, having kids just kind of, you know, just really hang out within, you know, and do their homework, and it's a really kind of nice environment. So I said, well, why don't, you know, I kind of mash that up, create a facility so people could, you know, like, you know, otherwise may not have interest, kind of get introduced to the arts.
Now, I've seen here you have a number of studio rooms you also have on your estate. What is that stage?
Yeah, so it's not like a stage, like it's sort of been, I'm not trying to go ahead and have it at Stonehoney. I mean, it's mostly just like the idea that a big component of what we're doing is going to be education. So we want people to kind of learn how to like, you know, use cameras and use different like, you know, computers and mix and, you know, master and things like that. And so a lot of it is going to be like, kind of like, you know, it might be fireside chats. It might be kind of like an open classroom environment. So it's meant to kind of be more like that. If there's any performance, I would say it's like, going to be more like a acoustic, but we're not going to have anything, you know, that would certainly bleed out and, you know, be extremely noisy.
But that's not to be open to the public access?
Yeah, no, yeah. So the idea is that like, one of the things that, you know, is important is that like, is that we know who's in the facility, and that's a safe facility. And so, you know, by individuals kind of paying like a $20 a month thing, like we will know, and it'll be keycard access, so we'll know who's in there and who's moving around. So like, we don't want to have an environment where, you know, people are buying tickets and they're coming in, and we don't know who they are or whatever. It's important that like, yeah, that it's kind of a, like, for lack of a better word, a closed community, that, you know, there's some AYC that's going on, so it is a safe environment.
Now, any matter of that, Sandy, this one, we need to touch upon. In terms of the soundproofing of the facility, make sure that's completely at either to the adjacent businesses or add on either side.
Yeah, I mean, we're putting considerable amount of money into it. You know, we already have, we're building studios in our own offices. Those are being built right now in London and Lagos and Nigeria. But the one in Beverly Hills is built. And, you know, in that space, we actually have a high-end jewelry store that sells, you know, $800,000 watches right above us. We have cars right below us in Beverly Hills. And that room, you know, we really mitigate sound, but there's no complaints. So I don't think that's going to be an issue here, would be a certainly higher.
So you have your professional tech.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's not going to be like a live night kind of thing. We're going to try to make it, you know, really stay there.
All right. In terms of the employees, so you're going to have 50 employees in the studio, correct?
Correct.
And that's going to be a lot of them during the course of the day when they're working, right? So that would activate the downtown as opposed to restaurants that have nightclubs, right?
Correct.
That's all I had?
I have a couple of questions. You go first.
So I have a few. I know that many recording studios in places where recording and performances take place, those buildings are built with many inches of concrete. And I know this is an old building. And I know this building was not built for sound. You spoke about your building in Beverly Hills, and that's adjacent to a jewelry store. It doesn't complain, but you've got people living nearby. And so I just want to know what complaints for them, because it is an old building, and it wasn't built for the sound that I think you're going to put in there.
Yeah, I mean, I, so, I mean, a couple of things to that. So I don't think the sound is going to be really that considerable, because we're not doing any like live rehearsals. There's not going to be like any like live instrumentation really going on that would kind of create like most of the noise. But I, you know, I do know that like, we have to mitigate it regardless of even if someone was, you know, sleeping above us, because there are other recording studios. So if, you know, if, for instance, someone is on the floor making noise like this, and it's not mitigated properly, like Studio A, B, and C would essentially, you know, in the podcast studios would basically, you know, usable, because, you know, the noise would be in the doorsroom. So we need to be able to manage the noise at a level that a microphone in any one of these studios, you know, with a high level of sensitivity, wouldn't be able to pick up sound from adjacent rooms. So, you know, so if we're able to mitigate that, which we have to for the sake of our business, it certainly won't go out to someone that's sleeping 500 feet away.
Okay, and you had mentioned that the stage would be used for educational purposes. So you're not planning on putting performances in there where people pay to come in and watch live performances?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not, that's not the kind of facility. Like, I don't want the liability of having performances in which people are like dancing. You know, like, our goal is not to do like, you know, like a House of Independence or something like that. That's not.
That's not the nature of the business?
No, that's not the nature of the business. And again, like, you know, we're not like, we're not going to be selling tickets or, you know, having anyone. Like, everything that we're doing is kind of built around the community. So like, you know, so the stage is kind of similar setup to what we have here, which is like, it's more like a auditorium, you know, kind of setup.
So you had mentioned it would be about a $20 nominal fee per month. And you also mentioned this is a place where kids can hang out and learn things. I don't know that the kids in our community necessarily have $20 a month to pay for a membership.
Yeah, of course, yeah. And so that's something, obviously, we're, you know, we're cognizant of. So like, so the thing to me is not really so much on the price point. We want to make it accessible. You know, I'm on the, you know, the local community where the Newark All-Stars, we hire a lot of people from Newark All-Stars. We also work with Boys and Girls Club of Esberry. Like, this is, you know, that is something that we're very cognizant of. You know, at the end of the day, like what we're trying to solve, you know, whether it's through like subsidies, subsidies, or like partnerships, or like, you know, corporate partnerships, or whatever, you know, the important thing is that like, what I've learned by working with the All-Stars is that it is important that there is like, you know, that people like kind of like give back, you know what I'm saying? That it's a two-way street, so to speak. So it's not just like, you know, open everyone, but at the same time, like people coming in, and it's accessible, but also requires like, you know, like, kind of be part of the community. Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm like wording this correctly, but like, you know, but the idea is that, yeah, we are, I don't want to make it like exclusionary, like where it's.
We don't ensure that people in Esberry Park, you know, that could otherwise report $20, they still have access to the program.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I think there's a variety of ways that we can achieve that, you know. But I think if I just make it like kind of free, on every day, one run of business, and two, you know, I don't think that's going to achieve what we're looking to do either, so.
I didn't go to the mezzanine in the second floor, I made it just for you. We have a mezzanine, it's just collaboration space, am I correct?
Correct.
And then you have your offices upstairs, is that correct?
Correct.
Sorry.
That's okay. I think I'm, I think I'm fine.
But by the way, I'm also open to suggestions. So like, so these are things that we're, you know, we're looking to figure out.
Yeah, so those were my main concerns.
I'll leave hippos to mine. To her point, you know, what we do with the recreation department is we provide, say, beach cards for people who can't afford our beach access in Esberry Park during the week. So maybe we could do a card or something for kids involved, who want to be involved in music and can't afford the $20. So I like the idea. I think it's, I think it's a very cool idea. I think it fits Esberry. I just don't want to be screamed at every time I go to Taka for dinner about sound.
Yeah.
So that would be wonderful if we could just make sure that that doesn't happen. So when I'm envisioning this, is it, is it, so my son was in Lake House, and I know he's here. So there's like separate rooms where kids get guitar lessons in one room, and then the big band in the other room. And then none of that sound mixes, which is what I'm envisioning your stage to?
Yeah, very similar, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then an open space where the stage is and who's performing there?
So yeah, so the stage is kind of like, so like with the stage, it's really meant to be like, again, like, it's not the sole purpose, like during, for 95% of the time, it's, there's going to be like collaborative, open, like desks, like where it's so you're able to, so much like have like this, where like you'd see the co-working space. It's just that if we're having like.
And are people going to be playing music at these desks, I guess is what I'm asking?
No, 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 no. So they're going to be like working like you do. If you're, if you're ever at a Bellwars, a lot of kids.
No, but I know coworkers.
Yeah, yeah. So in the open space, like a lot of kids after school will just come and like kind of, what I used to do at the library, like you go there, you just work, so you're out at home, you know, whatever, and you're, you know, you're working, and you kind of, you know, you're out of the house, and you're doing your homework, and whatever. And then if there's something, like I was just saying, you have a rep from Apple who's going to be talking about like your ones of like playlisting and how to get your stuff. Because we, I mean, we have a lot of really good relationships, because we work with like a lot of high-profile artists. So like, we could have someone who's like a high-profile, you know, mixing engineer, just giving like a little talk on like the best practices to like our, you know, so like, think of it as almost like, like what you're doing at like meetup.com, like a meetup, really. That's, that's for the purposes of the community.
So I think one of the key things is like, you do have studios here, and they can't go, the sound can't seep that room into another room.
Right.
Otherwise, you're interfered. So you have to be sure that it's soundproof enough that it can't escape those interference.
Yeah.
And that's where predominantly the music would be, in these.
Yeah, I mean, all my employees will be working above us also. So like, so, you know, like if I had like a Kiss reunion tour here, it wouldn't be great for anyone, including my business. Which is, you know, like this, like, I don't know, this is kind of like, again, like, it's meant to be part of the community and kind of uplifting. But also, you know, the thing that we make our money with, all my employees will be working above this, so they can be stars as well. A conference call, we're getting some mail, the screen will play.
And if we wanted to talk to your neighbors, you said that your neighbors in Beverly Hills are really, really have no problem with it? We could talk to them.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I don't, I don't know them. I think directly above us is the Demelios. So I don't know if they'd answer me, but I can ask them. And then the jewelry stores are over the top store. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, I'm more than happy to give references. Like I said, I've been in the community my entire life, you know, like.
So we've had, we've had years where people have told us, I'll give you an example, the Esberry Hotel, that there would be no sound issue. And then we spent a summer being screamed at because of the sound on the Esberry Hotel. So any references of around the Beverly Hills structure, that would be really great for us, just so we can confirm what you're saying. I'm sure what you're saying.
I also live here, yeah, I live here.
If they're not going to call you, they're going to call me.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, yeah, we could, I could work out there.
And that was, that was part of my point, too. I watched when the Lake House was built, like the concrete between the floors was like misty, because it was built just before that.
Well, I only know it because I go, when I walk through, you, you don't hear my kid in the big band with the guitar players.
Yeah, it's like, it would be a passive if you took, because no one would ever record in the studio, which you could hear adjacent studios.
And no food or drink people living around you?
No, I know that. What I'm saying is that the threshold, like in this studio, if I had a microphone with the preamp turned up that had a sensitivity where air coming out of the vent would be disrupting, like the threshold is much, is much lower. If, you know, like, so even if you said, I don't care about the neighbors, like for us to have a successful business, like our, you know, the bar we would need to meet will be much higher, because of the necessity of the space, just like.
And no food or drinks in the space, right?
I mean, you know, we'll do like snacks, like, you know, it's like.
It's not even restaurants.
Okay, just checking, just checking, Andy, just checking.
What are your hours of operations?
Yeah, I mean, just, I would say normal business hours, you know, I mean, I would say like 9:00 AM to like 10:00 PM, you know, something like that.
You know, weekends, you have orders that come in on weekends, or you accommodate them?
Yeah, yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say on the weekends, it would be open as well. But like, you know, I don't want it to be like, you know, like a midnight, like, whatever.
But predominantly, I can look on the second, the third floor, and mezzanine the second floor, actually where you have the offices. So this is going to be essentially the regular office hours.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that was a part of something, really, that was after.
Okay.
So the studios wouldn't be open for overnight or Saturday and Sunday?
Well, I think, so I think Saturday, Sunday, they need 10 hours, because, you know, I think that's, that's part of it, especially, you know, but like during daycare, you know, it's not going to be like, it's not going to be like, you know, a lot of studios in the city, like they, you know, they operate at like 2:00, 3:00 AM, but that's not the idea. That's how we're trying to, like, the environment we're trying to create.
Any other questions?
No, they, yes, so it's fine.
I had a, I had a number of questions that have actually been answered during the presentation, so I appreciate that. I was most concerned about sound mitigation. But I'm, I'm pleased to hear your answers, and I understand the need about, the industry needs might actually be stronger than the residential concerns in the area. But notwithstanding, I would anticipate that if there's going to be a redevelopment plan amendment, there would certainly be sound mitigation standards in place.
And so who actually ensures that those, on the behalf of the city, who ensures that we have those sound mitigations in place?
Well, we can do a report, and then that report can get incorporated to any approval.
So I, and I think it's going to be a multi-pronged approach. There'll be regulations in place. They'll have to demonstrate compliance with those regulations as part of both their planning board approval and to the extent that it overlaps into construction code and construction issues. It would be confirmed at that time as well during the fit-out.
That's it?
Those are my only questions, relatively straightforward plan amendment compared to some of the others that have been considered.
No, and Fred, any questions? Okay, so we thank you for your presentation. We're hoping you stay around, because if public have questions, that'll be during the public session. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is by Porta at Esberry LLC for a redevelopment project at 911 Kingsley Street, block 3901, lots 5 through 9.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, appreciate it. My name's Sal Alfieri. I'm an attorney at Cleary, Giacobi.
Can people back here?
I can't.
No, okay.
I'll speak a little louder.
I think our microphone is really terrible. I mean, we should look into new microphones, because it's not the first.
Is this any better, any better? I'll speak with more bass. My name is Sal Alfieri. I'm from Cleary, Giacobi, Alfieri, and Jacobs. I represent the applicant here tonight, Porta at Esberry Park LLC. We're going to be making a presentation for you tonight related to a proposed redevelopment and expansion of the existing restaurant space that is commonly known around the town as Porta. The first person that's going to be speaking for us tonight is Jared Moran. Once we get the technology up and running, he's going to go over the plans generally, give you an idea of the scope of the project and, and, you know, what, after two, multiple TRCs, what we came up with in a collaborative effort that we think will really benefit the city. After that, we also have Sean Delaney, who's here, who's going to be able to touch on some planning and engineering issues that, or questions that may pop up. And then we also have representative and owner of the LLC who'll be able to answer any operational questions.
So good evening, everybody. This, my name is Jared Moran. I am a principal and landscape architect for Bowman Consulting Group. We were responsible for the design of the Porta Park expansion and building expansion. I'm going to walk you through the closed design that we currently have in place. As you can see on the screen right here, the, the project site is the existing Porta Esberry Park Restaurant, and includes the adjacent lots between the existing Porta site and First Ave. So as you can see, Porta, the lot is bound by Kingsley Street to the east, First Ave to the south, and Second Ave to the north. And, yeah, so, so the project, we can go to the, okay, so, yeah, right here, what we're looking at now, this is the planned view of the proposed improvements. You can see. So, yeah, so, you know, so how I'm going to break, walk you through the site, it's, we've basically broken it down into these areas. We have the existing Porta Restaurant at the top left of the screen. To the right, the existing Porta Park, that's the existing improvements. I'm sorry, west of the Porta, the existing Porta Restaurant is where the expanded Restaurant will go. That is approximately 3,600 square feet. And to the top right, we have the bocce area, the gaming area, and the existing cottage that exists on the corner of Kingsley and First Ave. And then the green in the lower area will be the event space, and that is where the proposed tent, the events, event tent, and outdoor entertaining area will exist. So, so, yeah, so looking at the, you know, the color rendered plan view here, we could see, I'm going to walk you through the improvements within the area, the surface materials, and then I have some three D perspectives that will help everybody kind of understand the site a little bit better. So, yeah, so the restaurant expansion, as I said before, is about 3,600 square feet inside with the expanded kitchen, and it will also house for wrestlers.
The what, what did you just say?
Uh, to be wrestlers, for, for men and women. So overall, the area of the project is approximately 1,500 square feet. And just to give a little bit of a background on this, so we worked with the TRC, represented to them in the summer, and got, received some comments. We had two working sessions with the planners of the TRC, and went back, made the adjustments, and went back to the TRC for a second meeting, had, you know, compliments from the design and the efforts that went into working with the TRC. So, you know, we're excited, really excited about the project. We think it's, you know, really gone a long way since the inception of the concept and working with the TRC, so. So, yeah, so with the restaurant extension in the lower left-hand corner, to the north of that is, you'll see the two gray areas, those are, that's trash enclosure. Those are going to be surrounded on the, you know, all sides, as well as the roof. That'll help with the, you know, any rain, but also from the adjacent buildings, the windows, they're not going to be looking at trash, so that'll also kind of help. To the north, we're along Second Ave, you see, there's a bike track, so we'll get right there for them. So we're proposing a bike storage shelter, which will house approximately eight bikes. So, yeah, moving on to the, the top right, the bocce and the cottage area, there will be a connection to the existing Porta Park, right? So the overall design style of the expanded park improvements were more or less taken from this existing Porta Park. It's natural materials, it's more of a national park design style. style, right? So very, uh, you know, rough and rugged materials, very natural feel. So there's a connection point to, uh, to the bocce area at, at the top there, as well as a centrally located walkway that will, uh, connect First Avenue entrance to the existing Porta Park. So, as you can see in the, uh, you know, within that bocce area, we have two bocce courts. One, on the right-hand side will be, uh, will have a surrounding wall, right, like a typical bocce court. And then the one on the left is gonna be more of a flexible for the second bocce court, but, uh, you can pull tables and chairs out when, when you need to. Um, along Kingsley Street, you can see there's a, an overhead structure with some tables and chairs under there and a satellite bar. And below the cottage is a more secluded area that will be some various seating elements with a, the fire pit. Right? So moving down on the event space, so we have, you know, the main area is that green, right? So that's synthetic turf. That's where the, the, the tent will be located, right? The tent is approximately eighty by fifty, uh, feet, right? So four hundred, four thousand square feet. Um, the reason for the synthetic turf is so that we can, uh, you know, put, put, this tent can be there for extended period of time and not, you know, impact the, uh, surface of the, of, of the ground. So this is what it'll look like when the tent is not there. If you go to the next slide, this is, you know, uh, the, the, um, area of the tent. One of the things that did come up in the TRC meetings, we had the tent that was abutted right up against First Avenue. It turned ninety degrees. So one of the comments from TRC was let's try and take that away from First Ave. And what we have is a, uh, a wood structure, uh, an overhead structure that kind of wraps around the building. So from First Avenue, when you're looking, and, uh, we have some, some slides, uh, picturing what that's gonna look like, but it'll be, um, the transition, right? We buffer a little bit from the tent, so it's not gonna be the tent in the face. Uh, also along First Avenue, it's hard to see here, but we have shade trees that are, you know, very closely planted along First Avenue, and, uh, that's kind of also helped with the buffering of, of the tent overall. Uh, adjacent, you know, you see that, uh, we have two fire pits, uh, right between the tents and First Avenue. Two fire pits, these are small seating areas, and then various other seating areas of, you know, small and, and large. So that is all.
Ma'am.
Can we turn our phones on mute?
The reason they're not going outside, but no, I'm not turning my phone off. No, excellent.
So, yeah, so, um, you know, just, just walking through the, the surface elements, uh, you know, we're gonna have a more natural, so.
Disruptive.
So, flag, uh, paving, right, with more of a natural, uh, look, and, uh. So what we're looking at here, this is a bird's eye view from over the tent, right? Looking into the, uh, you know, Kingsley Street is north, uh, up north. And, uh, you know, we're looking over the improvements, the bocce area, and the small seating area, and you can see here, the, the surface material we're looking to use, uh, some bluestone flag, uh, bluestone, similar to the existing Porta Parks, some decomposed granite and, uh, and some concrete. So we're very types of materials, but all on the natural side. Uh, as far as lighting, you know, we're looking to just keep that very low heat, uh, you know, similar to the, uh, existing Porta Park with the overhead string light. We have some string lights, some low ballards, uh, but it's not, it's not meant to, you know, light, light the place up more for security and safety purposes.
Jared? You could correct me if I'm wrong, but the design was intended to almost activate portions of First Avenue and along, uh, along the beachfront there, so that when people are walking by, it, it's inviting. There's, there's, there's activity going on. They can, it, it's almost as if, if a, and the intention is, is that if you're walking down First Avenue, you, you see activity, you wanna go and, and participate in what's happening in the Porta Park area.
That's, no, that's right. That, that's one of the, one of the main elements from the TRC that we heard from them, is that they wanted to open up the views from Kingsley and first use of the park, right? So they didn't want us to kind of wall off or buffer the, the uses from this expansion to the road. So, so that was one of the, um, the main elements along the right-hand side of the page. You know, beyond that fence, generally see we have a, a low seat wall right along First Ave. That's gonna be, you know, right here. So it's gonna be a concrete wall that's, uh, colored in a similar color as the building to kind of tie in, right, the, uh, the, the site elements. So, right, that was, that was one of the, um, items from TRC that, that was welcome, that we, you know, made the plan stronger. So, yeah, so this is, this is view here. We're looking at a ground-level shot from First Ave towards the existing Porta Building. This is that central walkway. We've got the tent on the left-hand side, and, uh, the, uh, fire pit seating area in the bocce to the right. This is another shot, uh, ground-level shot from the bocce area, Kingsley Street is to the left, cottage is in the rear. All right, this is the, uh, main event space, uh, you know, so we're seeing some standing tables and more like a pantry. You see there's event space, foyer, al- almost, uh, but then you got the, the bisecting walkway there to the left and First Ave, uh, top of the page. Another shot underneath that structure, the tent, the event tent is to your left. Uh, another shot, the fire pit, uh, First Ave is, is what we're seeing there in that. That's, so this is the shot right here. So this is from First Ave sidewalk, looking at the tent, right? And the next shot, so, so, you know, this is what we're, we're gonna see with the tents up and tents down. This is what, what you're gonna see. So, so that, uh, that structure frames the tent, but it also provides, uh, more or less a frame to the synthetic turf space, which is a flexible, open space when, when the tent is down. Another shot from the turf looking back towards First Ave. And then we have the, um, trash enclosure with the building expansion, right? So you see the building expansion there. What we envision is, the building expansion is gonna be a few feet higher, but you can see, we're, we're, we're planning on lighting up the, uh, the, the facade material just to kind of blend in with the height of the, uh, existing building. Uh, you can see the tent, uh, sorry, the bike shelter right there, and the trash enclosures to the right and left. And that's just another shot of the trash enclosure area along Second Ave. All right, so I think that, that, that concludes the presentation from my end.
Okay, so that's, instead of waiting to the end, I'm gonna ask some questions about your presentation while you're up. So, the additions, you're adding a pergola, uh, seated bar. How many seats?
At the bar, at the satellite bar?
Sat, uh, you're correct. Satellite bar. How many seats?
Uh, I'm not sure if there'll be any seats there. I think it's, it's meant to be more of a stand-up, uh, get your drinking, you know, sit down in one of the, uh, many table seating areas.
Okay. You're adding a bocce court, no problem. You're adding a garden with fire pit with seating. How many seats?
Uh, we're showing, uh, right now, I mean, we're looking at, uh, I didn't do a, a twelve-pound.
Okay, no problem. You're adding a pizza trailer. Will there be seating? If so, how many? All these questions are going to capacity. So if you want me to just ramble them off, and then you give an answer at the end?
Yeah. So for the outdoor space capacity-wise, we have it about, uh, two hundred people.
Okay, I'm gonna continue to ramble on. And you got a canopy structure. How many seats?
Yeah, yeah, that, so that's, that's the entire expanded area.
That's the tent? You got two tip, you got the tent and you list a canopy structure.
And you have the, the event space.
Right, so the tent and the event space. That's anonymous.
Okay, okay, okay. But we're looking for numbers, and we can get them down the road, but we look for total capacity, if it was maxed out.
Yeah, let me, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, so I'll give you the rest of the questions, so you can back to us. You're adding a water feature, so again, the question's gonna be how many seating. You're adding a seating wall, but you show people sitting on it. So how many people could possibly sit on that? You're adding a fifty by eighty tent. What would the capacity be for a sitting event, say a wedding? And what would it be for an open event, say a concert? So what would the capacity be for that fifty by eighty tent?
Yeah, let me, let me talk to, we'll, we'll, we'll get you.
Okay, just because lots being added, where this could become, you're saying two hundred to be two thousand?
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm probably not the best person to, to, you know, answer that question, so.
You mentioned the trash enclosure. Do you have the dimensions?
Yeah. Uh, Sean, civil engineer.
Okay. And then you mentioned bike storage. You said it's enough for eight bikes. I'm gonna tell you, that's not enough, guys.
Yeah.
I mean, okay, that's not enough. Uh, the other stuff is parking, 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 possible directions, parking, parking. Will the tent be up all the time or taken down when you're not having scheduled events?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that.
Okay. We have the operations for, to be able to handle those.
So any tent questions? Hold off for somebody else?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have one of the owners here who'll be able to, uh, provide some more insight.
I think they were all my questions for you, and again, they all go back to like
Capacity.
Capacity. If every one of your areas was at the max.
Yeah.
It looks like a lot more than two hundred.
Yeah, let me, uh.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I ask, do you have an aerial view of the entire block? Because I believe that event space has residential homes behind it?
Yeah, to the, to the west. That's right.
So that event space sort of butts up against people's homes?
Yeah, so the, the plan is, um, at ground level, there'll be a six-foot-high, um, solid fence, right? So at least ground level, and there'll be some planting to buffer, uh, you know, at, at a ground level.
What do you have, where's your sound mitigation person? Do you have somebody here who's gonna talk to us about sound? Because it sounds like it's gonna be extraordinarily loud to anyone who lives in that area.
If you've got two hundred people in your yard, your neighbor next door.
Or, or a wedding with a DJ or a band, and you have the vibe, and then you have two apartment buildings on that block.
Yeah.
Do you have a sound engineer here?
We do not have a sound engineer, but there, so.
Jim, if you wanna come up and introduce yourself and speak, please.
I'm Jim Watt. I'm, uh, an architect, uh, as well as one of the owners of Porta. So anyway, there is, there is, there is a buffer between, um, the tent and the building next door. The, the, the driveway access is there. We are working with our tent company. They have sound attenuation panels. It can be part of the system, and they, they give us a rating that we can get back to you with kind of an engineered report on that. We're also planning on adhering to all of the, the noise requirements, requirements of that site and its zone in terms of the ten o'clock stop, all of that kind of stuff. Um, the last thing I wanna do is, is, is annoy the neighbors, the sound, uh, because I know it's just gonna be a nightmare. So I'll make sure that, that the tent is designed in a way the sound is attenuated, and that we conform to all of, all of the regulations, just like the cell pony does, just like we do currently, in terms of when you have to stop the music. I wanna speak to capacity.
Since you're on tents for a second, let me ask you a couple of questions that you can get us, again.
Can you turn down the microphone?
Sure.
Don't even, tonight, it's, you know, follow-up questions. So the tent, on one plan, it says it has tinted windows, but on another set of plan, it says it has clear windows. So that's a question that can be worked out. Don't be a problem. And going back to what Amy said about the sound. So the only way sound can get out of this tent is the doors. The windows cannot be opened and the flaps cannot be removed.
Correct.
So how do you supply AC in the summer and heat in winter?
There, there's, uh.
And where, where are they depicted on the plan?
They are in the, um, just to the north of the tent. There will be a mechanical unit that will heat and cool the tent.
Okay.
Just like, just like if you were to go to a wedding in somebody's yard, there would be heating and cooling like that. Um, the, the, the idea is that the, wherever we have, um, neighbors, we would not have any glass or anything clear for privacy from both sides. We would, we would, we will go to, to, you know, significant expense to make sure that the, the tent is soundproofed, because I, I know, having, having owned many restaurants, certainly in the downtown and in, in, in residential areas, that even if I.
The outdoor space, Jim. Listen, when we talk, when we bring up the pony, the pony's been here fifty years, so people have gotten used to that sound or paradise. But we, you're asking for us to grant you permission to expand your space that is gonna have a substantial increase in sound and capacity, but just focusing on sound. So the wedding space is gonna have either bands or a DJ, I assume.
Yes.
And then the outdoor space, I mean, you already, I eat at your restaurant a lot. You have a band out in the back, lovely, but I assume that's gonna increase a little bit in your, while your outdoor space.
We would, we would have no, no live music in, beyond where we do now.
Okay.
Except for the tent. So let me, let me, let me explain programmatically what my intention is with the plan. So the, the event space is only a private event space. It will, it will serve no other function for us. It will not be expanded dining. It will be, there'll be no late-night activity there that isn't part of like a wedding or a graduation party. So it will only be activated for private events. It will operate, in, in essence, independent of our restaurant and in any late-night activity. The entire area that you see around that tent is specifically for weddings and private events. When we talk about the fire pit area and the bocce area, that would be an expansion of our, our, our Porta Park, but the idea was, again, that would be catering to private events. Like, let's say, for example, Sal's law firm wanted to have an event in the summer, and they wanted to have fifteen people. They would come and rent that space. That's what the satellite bar is for. It would accommodate that.
So it's not, it's not open to the public?
It, it will be open to the public at different times, but what, the main purpose of that is to have smaller intimate spaces. As you can see, they're kinda, they're all designed as kind of inti, they're, they're not, it's not one big space. They're smaller spaces. So smaller groups of people. What happens for us is, is, it would be a nightmare if that whole area was just open to the public all the time. It just.
It would be a nightmare for us, too.
It wouldn't work.
It would be a nightmare for us, too.
It wouldn't work. Just, just from a security point of view, it wouldn't work. So, so what, what we're envisioning is, luckily, you know, as we all are enjoying the successes of Asbury and growth of Asbury Park, there's more and more demand for private events here. People wanna be here. Um, talking to Brian from iStar, he is dying for big event space in the zone. Bringing people here, they'll end up buying his condos. They end up not only coming here, but then going to other restaurants after they might leave here after a wedding. So the idea is, we're fine with the business that we're doing at Porta in terms of our dining and our late-night business. We don't wanna expand that at all. What we wanna expand is our private party business. So yes, would we, would we have that bocce ball area open to the public? Yes. But we also might have it be rented out for a private event. That's why we have the public space of our existing park, and what we're doing is creating basically outdoor rooms, really, I think, beautifully designed, beautiful surfaces, beautiful, you know, well-appointed, that will attract private parties of, of all sizes. We don't plan on having live music out there. The music would be just about the, 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 for, for the weddings or the private events. That's it.
That is live music outside.
It's in a tent.
It's, so I would love to see the specs on that soundproof tent, if you could get them to us.
Absolutely, yes.
That would be awesome, so we could check with others that are using it to see how it impacts their neighbors.
Yep, absolutely. Listen, I, I, we have an aligned agenda here with, with regard to sound. If I have, if I have neighbors who are not happy with us, it's a nightmare.
Yes, we do.
And I don't want, listen, the other thing is, I don't wanna be a bad neighbor, right? I live right down the street from here, so I, I, I wanna be a good neighbor. Um, I wanna accommodate what we have as a real demand for weddings. We can't accommodate.
I don't see how a tent is not gonna, sound isn't gonna leak out. I mean, I've never heard that, Jim. I mean, maybe you have a magical tent that this is gonna happen here and send it to us. I mean, maybe you have a magical tent that this is gonna happen here and send it to us, but I've never heard that in my life. That there's gonna be a tent where sound's not gonna be.
This is not a, this is not a soft fabric tent.
Okay.
These are, these are prefab panels that are on a.
They're very sturdy because they're so resistant.
Yep, they're on a metal structure.
Exactly, take it up and down wherever there's a snowfall.
They don't make these tents here in the States, these are, these are European engineered tents. I first discovered these tents, actually, by going down, uh, Ocean Avenue in Deal. One showed up one day, they had an amazing event there, I thought the tent was beautiful. It was not a loose fabric tent, it was a panelized system. It's like a prefab panelized building that they, that they put up overnight and then took down the next day. So these panels are insulated panels that can have sound insulation in them. Um, it's not, it's not what you're thinking of as a tent.
No, clearly, so yeah, yeah, so just get us more information, maybe people who, who use the tents, so we can also.
I can do that, we can also get, get some, I'll get, luckily, the, the, the company that we're working with that reps this company in, in, um, they're all engineers. So, so we can, we can get all of the information that you need to make both of us comfortable. Because I, I don't wanna go through the expense of doing this, and then we just have a major problem. Um, that makes no sense for anybody. But what I'm, what I'm thrilled about with this project is I think that, for me, it's a beautiful landscape project. Um, it, it's, it's activating that property in a way which I think is, is, is really quite lovely, given, given, you know, sort of what's happening around it, the pedestrian traffic. You know, I think that it's, to me, much more attractive than putting a, a six story building on that site. Is the idea of having something more, much softer, much, much more open. And something that, you know, is, 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 um, you know, for the benefit of the community.
I don't think anybody's denying that it's a beautiful spot, but you're in somebody's backyard, I mean, that's, that is.
I, I understand, listen, we're, we're, we have, we have late night activity in the building right now with neighbors, and we've had to mitigate those problems as they occur, and we always have.
So you said you wanna touch on capacity.
Capacity, we're, we're anticipating that the, that a tent will accommodate, there'll be no music events in there. These are going to be.
Tabled events.
Tabled events.
Tabled and charity events.
Tabled and charity events.
So the wedding tent, that's what you're saying? You're not gonna have a DJ or a band at somebody's wedding?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna have concerts.
It's not gonna be a concert.
Oh, okay, I get it.
No, no, no.
Where increases to capacity.
So I'm not gonna put a thousand people in there, you know, to listen to a rock show, that, that's not what this is about.
Well, we didn't know that till you just told us.
No, no, that's why I wanna speak to it.
Right, okay, go ahead.
So I, I, I think that we'll, we've laid it out for about two hundred people in, for, for the events. We've worked with Laz, uh, parking, uh, on, uh, a valet plan which accommodates all of that. We've worked, worked out an agreement with, with iStar in principle, in terms of where that would happen, how that would happen. Laz has worked with us to figure out where the staging would go, so we're not interrupting particular flow, we're not backing out onto Kingsley Street, we're not, we're not clogging up the sidewalk. I think we have a really beautiful, um, uh, valet plan that Sean can speak to in detail. And capacity for the rest of it, like I talked about, what, what I envision, it would be, you know, if, if, if the, if the mayor and council wanted to have an event and they needed to accommodate, you know, about twenty people, they could, you guys could come and take over part of that outdoor space and have, and have your own bartender. You could, you could, if you wanted to do the bocce, you could do the bocce, if you wanna do the fire pit, you could do the fire pit. So I'm not seeing this covered with thousands and thousands of people, I, that, we, we would be unmanageable for us.
What is your total capacity, then? Total capacity for the entire everything?
For the, I don't know, off the top of my head, I don't know.
You're gonna have to give us a ballpark number down the road.
Yeah, okay, I, I would imagine that if it was at full capi-, I'm just, not, not the existing building, cuz I don't wanna contradict what our, what we, you know.
Just spitball.
We have agreements with the fire department and stuff, that I don't wanna contradict that. But I would say for, for, for what we're talking about in terms of the new land and its development, we're probably at about a hundred people for, for outside the tent at full capacity and two hundred people for inside the, the tent.
Okay, thank you. So, since you brought up the parking, you're asking for the loss of nine city parking spots on First Avenue?
Here's what, here's what I'm proposing.
Okay.
Is that when our, when we have an event and when we have a valet, that we pay for those spaces. Just as if I was parking there for four hours. Those nine spaces would be paid for by us during those times. I'm not asking the city to lose any parking revenue.
Okay, how many spots is Laz reserving for your events across the street? In the parking lot that's supposed to be for people going to the beach or going to the Stone Pony, I think? How many spots is the city losing in the Laz parking lot for you?
I don't, I don't have an answer, I can get you that answer.
Thank you. And then you have, uh, kiosks for the parking on the sidewalk.
Yes.
In the city right away, will we still have a five foot passable sidewalk?
Uh, we'll make sure that, 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 that there is a passable sidewalk there.
Right, and somewhere it said there's gonna be a possible interruption on the city sidewalk by drop off in valet parking. These sidewalks are heavily traveled. We know they're heavily traveled, so we can't have them shut down when the Stone Pony's letting out. So that's gonna have to be reworked.
I understand, I mean, we have, we have valet parking at Pascal Sabine, at Homesick. Uh, we've had it at many times, we've had it in, at, at Porta, and we've always been able to manage that situation. And that's one of the reasons we're going with Laz, because they, they're, they're a dual, they, they, they control the lot and they control the, the, uh, the valet operation, which I think is, is important because if there's a capacity issue, they'll know about it in, in advance.
Right, and the Laz parking lots, and this is something I'm gonna have to ask, are people down the road? I don't know if, uh, Brian Sherken, uh, Starfield are on the hook to provide so many parking spots for retail for Mazza Marquette? So if they're eliminating more in this parking lot, are we gonna be in violation of that agreement? So like, when you find out from Laz, how many they're gonna be reserving for you? If you're saying you're gonna have a wedding with two hundred people, they'll be reserving at least a hundred parking spots, so I mean.
I understand, I, I, and again, in talking to Brian from, from, what's the new name of the company?
Starfield.
Starfield? He, he has so fewer event spaces than he was anticipating having, you know, in, in the waterfront redevelopment area, that I would imagine that the parking calculation took into account, we're basically putting it on our property as opposed to putting it on another property, basically.
I'm probably figuring the same thing, but, you know, to not ask the question, we'd be foolish.
Absolutely, and I, 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 I think, I think this is, again, one of these aligned agendas that we have, that if parking is a nightmare for our customers, they're not gonna do it. So it has to work.
So those surface lots are temporary, what happens when that surface lot gets sold to a developer?
Well, my understanding is that there's certain structured decks that are to be built when those triggers are.
What happens if that doesn't happen in time for your events? What happens if a lot gets sold to a developer? There's no, a parking garage is not up yet, what happens in the interim?
We'll have to figure it out. I need to provide parking for my, for my guests, so we'll figure it out. I mean, I can't, I can't, I can't account for what, what may or may not happen, I think right now, there is an abundance.
If you had the crystal ball, you'd give me the winning lottery numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, that's right into me.
Jim, I'm not understanding this tent clearly, are you saying that there's a tent deal? That you could take me to?
It was for a private event at a private house.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll, I'll text you if, this summer I see one, I'll tell you.
If you could do that, just so I could experience it, because I'm thinking of like the Asbury's tent.
No.
That's what I'm thinking of.
No, 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 this is, this is a building that happens to come up and down.
I don't know that I've ever seen one, we've never had one before, right?
We've never had one before.
I call it.
But they do exist.
They do exist, it's, it's a panelized, it's, it's like a prefab panelized building, that's, that is what it is. We've actually been working with the construction department here in the city to make sure that it's gonna conform if we wanna keep it up year round. Um, and so far, so good.
Especially because of the snow load, so.
Snow load is, to me, that is the biggest issue with, with, with soft tents, is snow load. I mean, we, listen, we had that, I remember when the governor lifted the, the, uh, the timeline for when you couldn't, couldn't have it up for us in, in, when we had it in the park in Porta, and we had to have basically somebody monitor the tent while, i- if it snowed. This isn't that thing, this, this, this will handle any, any snowfall.
Okay, so how many more professionals do you have that are gonna make a presentation? Because we didn't expect this to go an hour, so.
Well, I just, we'll just have Sean.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll touch on very quick things, since most of it's been said about the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, so a couple of things, and the important thing, uh, to note, um, really regarding as, as planner with regards to the, uh, port of the development plan, um, the bulk, bulk standards that are required for lot area, lot frontage, uh, building height, all that is compliant. Parking, there is no requirement for this use for parking. Uh, we are removing some parking at the, um, where the, the expansion, the restaurant is going that was on site. Um, we, as I said, we configured that to really try to provide a, a larger, uh, trash enclosure area, recycling area to serve the needs of the expansion as well. Covering it with concerns for the neighbors next door looking down upon it. Um, truly, the, the smells and the, the sound and the sight of it doesn't drift up to the windows in those areas. There are some, some waivers, uh, that would be needed, that were pointed out, uh, by Michelle's, uh, letter. Um, most of them are related to it because the structure is, is a tent as opposed to a standard building, that's not really what was envisioned in the, the development plan, um, for this. The, a part of the expansion has a couple as well. Um, there's a, by the expanding, there's a hallway coming off the building about six, almost seven feet that's attached to the face of the building, creates the building to be over a hundred feet, there's gonna be a break there, so you would need a waiver for that. Um, some of the, the openings on the front edge, the void, the solid ratios and the fenestration, the expansion has no windows, just has some door openings. Um, the tents, depending upon what that panel goes on, they could be out, the ones with, um, with windows that can be seen, the, the doors are all, uh, so, are glass doors essentially for light to come in and out. Um, naturally, they're not, uh, they're not wood, they're not, um, panelized or something, that would be with the development plans, so that would need a waiver as well. Um, if they put a solid panel, the event must be a little more private or so, as opposed to having all the the openings for the windows for everybody to look in, or so they can swap out panels that way, too, if they need to. Especially, um, considering on, you know, if they wanna do that, especially on the the western side, adjacent to the, uh, the residential development, if they wanna look in there, see lights or things popping out, we can make that side solid, um, which would require, uh, a side waiver for the fenestration. Um, I mentioned the building material, the doors, we're not providing a painted wood composite door, there's steel doors on the expansion, plus the glass on the tent. The storefront at the bottom of the, um, of the tent up front, uh, I believe will hit the seventy percent if the, if the window panels are on there. You can see that if they put the solid panels up, you wouldn't hit that. There's no kick plate provided, cuz it's not a, a permanent structure like you would in a, um, you know, brick and mortar type building that would build that into it. Um, the facade colors, the, you know, the existing expansion is gonna match the existing colors of Porta. The corners of the corners are gonna be repainted, uh, decided or so to match the same colors of the Porta restaurant as well. Um, the tent, um, it's not gonna be a white tent, uh, shown in some of the, the renderings here, it was a a brownish, a little off, off, not a white, not white, but not a dark brown, some of the light beige colors, I'm trying to blend into that natural look of the wood, um, so it doesn't, so try to blend in with the surroundings of the park as opposed to being a white, you know, really beacon out there. Um, there's also a ten foot, uh, buffering for the loading space. The loading essentially would, would come straight back into the, you know, into the restaurant park right before the doors, they go right into the kitchen area and pull straight out into the, back out onto the road. The improvements on, on the road are shown, uh, per the infrastructure component plan, the mastery developer for the re-striping and reconstruction of that roadway um, on Second Avenue. Uh, First Avenue has the, the curb lines and all that, and the, the streetscape itself has to be finalized and still put in um, by the mastery developer. The kiosk would be located right above the curb line, essentially where a tree pit would go, so there'd be clear space um, on the back of the sidewalks, you know, between where the trees would go, that four foot strip between the curb and the back of the tree pits. The kiosk would sit up in that location, so it would not interfere with any um, pedestrians walking up and down the, uh, the sidewalk during a, you know, a valet event.
Hope we remove the trees.
No, the trees were set.
Okay.
Trees are staying, the kiosk would go next to the trees, between the trees.
Okay, thank you.
The last piece, I guess, just talking about the, at least the valet plan, um, Mr. Watt pointed out, it's not the intent to remove any tree, any parking along any of the streets for the use of be to come to an agreement with the city to rent or, or purchase those for an event time period uh, for the use during the event only, during the rest of the day would be, you know, use as normal. And when the event comes up, they obviously pre-warned, you, you close those spaces off, reserve them for a select time period. People come in, drop off, uh, to the valet, walk into the event, the valet people would drive down to Hex Street, make the U-turn down to Asbury, come back on Kingsley and into the parking lot at the back. There are about twenty parking spaces right now that have been, um, the agreement is put in place for for Laz to provide on there, obviously, you know, with two hundred people, twenty spaces is not a significant amount. Um, so they're still negotiating, still talking with that, to see if there are some opportunities for some, some other spaces right now. Um, if you can't, if you don't have valet parking here to park on the streets, you're gonna park in the public parking where, where people park right now. And then when they leave, they'll be coming out the parking lot, the valet will run over, pick it up, drive back out along Main Avenue, come right up First Street, park in one of those nine spaces. People get up their car, back out and take off again. And they would time that, obviously, on the pickups and stuff, to try and do, make sure there's no, uh, back of a car on the streets. Um, up there, that would interfere with traffic coming up and down First Avenue or Kingsley during normal operations. The operation would run at the same time as the sidewalk's being used. I mean, in many other, um, municipalities throughout the state, um, restaurants sometimes offer a service right in front of their facility, doesn't, they don't shut the sidewalk down for that, you pick up, pick your tea at the restaurant, you give it to them, they run to a place, they come back and and people are walking up and down while you're getting your valet car. So there's no planned interruption, no closing of sidewalks or anything like that. The idea is to keep the public areas public and open throughout the whole time, um, and not even, but this is used to work and intermingle with that. Um, one idea, one question you'd have about the seat wall that was outside, um, that was something that, um, the board of planner had, had, uh, had recommended. We wanna put some kind of, a little bit, a little more of a barrier around the outside, just to separate, so they just have a fence there. The fence is down low, it's forty-eight inches high total, so you can see over it. But providing a seat wall there, it's not just for the, anybody entering Porta or anything like that, it's there for the public, that they're walking down to be able to sit as well. Um, you can sit and have a conversation with somebody inside, either sitting in one of those fire pits or so, too, and interact with them, which is what the the whole plan and whole discussion with the TRC was, to really um, bring together and activate the streetscape with the peoples inside the, the Porta, you know, on, on a level that could be done. Not saying it's gonna be done, or, or so it will be done, depending on what kind of fence are going on, but the ability to see and speak and, and have conversations and, and feel that it's part of the whole thing, that was something that was very important with the TRC and that they made sure that we incorporated this as well.
Okay, can you go back to the other picture? Please. Okay, so where it says restaurant extension, and maybe I read it wrong. I thought one page said restaurant extension, while another page says proposed kitchen addition. So is it a combination of the two, or is?
No, it's just, it's kitchen and, and bathroom.
Kitchen and bathroom.
That's a question that I have, too.
Go back to the page where that blue and said restaurant extension. So what is the restaurant extension?
It's a kitchen and bathrooms for the, the events.
So it's a kitchen.
There is no customer area there.
Okay, so where are the vents and everything for the kitchen? So, so they don't affect the neighbors?
Okay, so we've already designed that, so it's gonna, it's gonna run up, across the roof, away, away from the neighbor, and up where our existing stack is. It's gonna be right next to our existing chimney.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, cuz we, that was addressed, the TRC was concerned about that as well. So, uh, we, we, we worked with our mechanical contractor, and that's no problem.
I will, we also are known that we, we tried to, wanted to re, re-purposed, um, provide a granite goat type facility, um, no cooking or anything in there. Um, give it on the beach, come, come up some, you know, meals are sold.
There will be cooking.
There'll be cooking?
Yes.
Cooking in there. There is a stack as well that's coming out there that has been raised above the, uh, the two second story as required by the, uh, uh, redevelopment plan.
Jim, you just mentioned restaurants, so the two hundred people in the tent, they're gonna be going out of the drink, they're gonna keep opening the door to go to the restrooms across the way?
No, see, see where it says restroom extension?
Yeah.
They're gonna be going in there.
So they're opening the tent door?
Right.
And they're going across to the.
Yeah, we'll have a covering there, and, you know, we'll have a temporary covering.
I'm just thinking of setting it, every time that door opens, it's more sound going into the neighborhood, that's, that's why I was asking that question.
We could do, we could do a, a, a vestibule, if we need to.
I just think it's, at some point, that's gonna be.
And would you just address how you're.
And would you just address how you're going to use the building on the corner of Kingsley and First?
Okay, so there will, it'd be basically a grab and go. So I'm envisioning, somebody's on the, on the beach, they want to come to Porta but they don't want to go inside, they don't want to hold, we would design a small menu that Porta like, like we'll call it maybe Porta Lite, where you'd walk up, order, grab your food and leave with it. You would not eat in the, in our park and you would not eat in that cottage. You would take it with you and leave.
Do you do late night food? What are you thinking for hours?
I, we don't know yet. I don't see why not. I mean, if, if.
That's on the corner right by the bar, right?
If the pony let out, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the ponies across.
So we wouldn't want lions, right?
Where Lass Park and his building used to be.
Yeah, right.
The two bungalows.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't gotten that far as to what that would exactly be. We just thought it was, I, I find it to be an attractive kind of little piece of architecture. We didn't want to, we didn't want to get rid of it. Doesn't really function in any other way other than something like that, so.
Well, it's a good initial presentation. Does anybody else have any questions? So I think you heard the majority of our concerns and, you know, anything else, I guess you can get in touch with Michelle. And if we have other questions, we can let Michelle know they asked you and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you all the information that you requested. I think, you know, I, these are, these are things that I need to ensure for us as well, so.
Okay. Would you like them to stay for the public commentary?
Oh, absolutely. And Michelle, did you have any questions or concerns?
No. No, because they were, they were answered during the presentation, some of the clarifications like about the bungalow and about that they're requesting design waivers from almost every architectural requirement in the design portion of the plan because of the nature of the tent. I also want a bit of clarification if it's not already clear, even though the tent appears as a temporary use, this developer is coming to you for as a nontemporary, a permanent use. So this is following the steps, same steps for, in our order of approvals as an actual structure, meaning it's the same process as for any of the town home developments. So it's, it's going to be considered permanent development.
Okay. You're aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Again, we thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
No, thank you. Yeah, and the public's going to ask questions outside. You may want to stick around.
I'm going to have somebody to stick around. I can't see.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Good.
We're going on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Boz Anderson.
Here.
Do you have any matters for us?
Oh, sorry. Nothing. Sorry.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout out to Leisha Floyd and Cassandra Dickerson, who hosted a beautiful Black History Month celebration today and honored some of the community members from Asbury Park who really make a difference. They did a great job. And just to let you know that the city designated today as Jessie May Rickstey for all that she's done for our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nothing, thank you.
Thanks. Mayor Moore?
Nothing, thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorneys? Thanks. May I have a motion to open a meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There will be a three minute time limit for each speaker. Again, please, your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. My name is Sam Wilichu. The address is 360 and 7 down here at Porta Park. And I'm here to talk about the containing costs and the burden of consistent taxes.
Sam, can you just use the microphone so we can get you on the recording?
No, but we're taping it on ABC TV.
And I'm really here to talk about the problems that the consistent increases in property taxes has caused to the residents, the renters, and also the small business owners. It's not sustainable that you keep on increasing property taxes. So I know it's not your fault. I've been in contact with the Association of Homeowners, with Jordan. We've had a number of discussions. And so I propose just three questions to you that would like to get an answer from. One, what are your plans to curtail the municipal spending, reduce the budget, separate from the school issue? So that's number one, because you can't keep on adding staff, you can't keep on increasing budgets because you keep on raising the taxes. Number two, let's talk about the education. We know that the education budget is the largest chunk of the taxpayers' money. That's where it goes. But our education system in Asbury Park is a disgrace. So have you thought about calling in a state audit to see what's going on with these people and to force some of these school boards out of office and get responsible administration that is accountable? So what is your role in dealing with this failing school district that costs us more money than any other part of the budget for Asbury Park? And the third question is, the developers get abatements for 30 years, 20 years, I don't know exactly what it is, but I'm told that they do not contribute to the school budget. That's kind of discriminatory. We all pay for this. Why are these people not having to pay? So there are the three questions I would like to hear some responses from you. That's all I have to say. I leave it to you.
Okay, I'll touch on the budget a little bit. We're, we know the taxes are high. You know, the taxes are high. We know why the taxes are high. That's why the past couple of years, if you look at this city's budget, we tried to keep them flat because the Board of Education has gone up. I'm not going to fib to you, right now we're in the budget process and we're looking at the numbers and we're trying to crunch the numbers so we don't come in with a high tax increase. But a lot of the stuff you want to control is out of our hands.
I realize that.
No, just even on the city side, where you have negotiated raises, the state dictates what we pay in the state health benefits plan, and that goes up every year. Last year, I think it was 23%. And also pensions. So, I mean, that's like a purview, it's part of the city budget, that we have no say over, that's dictated by the state. So that's where we are in the budget. As far as working together with the Board of Education, we have met with them in the past. We've offered to meet with them again because their budget has to be adopted by the end of March, which is right around the corner. Ours doesn't have to be. They're on a calendar fiscal year budget, July 1st through June 30th, and we're on a calendar year budget. The problem with the school budget is, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, like you see the tax increase for the school budget in 2023, that's only half of it because their budget is 2023 slash 2024. So automatically their budget's going up. Now, how much more? We've suggested to the Board of Education that other districts throughout the state have gotten loans for many different reasons. So we suggested, why don't you reach out to Trenton and see if you can get a $10 million loan to offset a $10 million increase that you can pay back, say a million dollars a year, and it could be sustainable. So we have reached out to them with some ideas. We're going to have a meeting with them soon, but they're under the gun. And again, with the Board of Education numbers, you know, the best place to go there is the Board of Education meetings.
No, I hear you.
And then.
And they just had an election.
And then as far as developers, any development in the beachfront? So the waterfront redevelopment area by law has to get a pilot. We can't do anything about that. That was passed by a previous council, so they have to get a pilot. And under a pilot, the city gets 95%, the county gets 5%, where I'm going to say under normal conventional taxes, the city would get about 40%, the Board of Education 45%, and the county 15%. So under a pilot, we're getting 95%, so we're using that money. Whatever the school board adopts as their budget, by state law, we have to pay. So if it's coming out of the pilot money or other money or whatever, we have to pay that by state law. So whatever their budget is, we have to pay. So if we're getting 95% instead of 40%, we can use some of that 55% to pay the tax, to pay that bill of theirs.
Have you requested a state efficiency order of the school system?
Myself and the council personally? No. No, no, sir.
So good.
Thank you, sir. And Joanne, or anybody wanted to add anything? Nope, okay.
Sylvia Sylvia, Executive Director for the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Try to make this quick. First, welcome, and I hear you're knocking it out of the park. Nice to meet you in person. I wanted to just congratulate you guys on the grant that you received for the boardwalk preservation. That, I read that application process when it was released, and that was daunting. At first I looked at it and I was like, oh, this isn't so bad, but it was, it was work. It was a lot. And to be able to get $20 million for Asbury out of a $100 million allotment for the entire shore is really, it speaks volumes to me, more than the, the commitment that the state has to preservation, but also the importance of the tourism industry recovery after COVID-19. And to see, there were 18 communities that were successful in their applications at Asbury Park and Atlantic City, both got $20 million each, which is the highest number. So it sounds to me like our 1.4 square mile city here is really important to the economic health of the state. So thank you for what you did and Madison Marquette between both entities. It must have been just absolutely grueling, but thank you. You did a fantastic job and I'm proud of you. Always proud of you, you know that. I have several things that are coming up. I'm going to just recommend that any details that anybody might want, to visit our website at asburyparkchamber.com. But we've got the St. Patrick's Day Parade coming up on March 10th, and you probably are aware, our grand marshal is Carrie Martin from Second Life Bikes. We've got a joint business expo with Jersey Shore Chamber of Commerce at the Berkeley on April 16th, then April 17th, we've got networking at the lanes. April 21st is restaurant tour, and we are using that again as a fundraising opportunity to support Mercy Centers, their pantry. They're serving now 6,000 people a month as opposed to 300 a month back in 2021. So we're really excited about that. And I also, I have a couple of flyers that I got from a friend at the NJEDA. They're, they're having a conference for small business. I'm going to leave this over there and I'm going to email it to everybody so that you have it also. It's on March 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia.
And just, you reminded me something I should have announced before. Sunday, March 3rd at the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel, which I call the Berkeley Carteret, and then again, I call Jersey Shore University Medical Center, Fink and Hospital. I guess I'm old. So at the Berkeley, Sunday is the Asbury Park Fishing Club show. It's the 31st year. It's considered to be the best fishing show on the Jersey Shore. And the great thing about it is Joey Pallato, who's the president, donates the entire gate proceeds. Shows Sunday, the following Wednesday, I'll be here handing out $10,000 worth of checks to Asbury Park, be at Little League Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Recreation, a lot of things. So that's Sunday, the 3rd at the Berkeley. People sleep overnight to get in line to buy the best plugs because some of these plugs for fishing never go in the water. They're made so fantastically that they're pieces of art and somebody will go there, buy it and put it on eBay and sell for five times and what they paid for it in two hours. So, but great club, Asbury Park Fishing Club, the oldest saltwater fishing club in the country. Sorry I didn't say that before, but thank you Sylvia for reminding. Okay, Rita?
Okay, your three minutes are up.
You're, you're right. I apologize, sir.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I know ways you could cut corners. One of them is not to have professionals at a shade tree commission. I thought that was ridiculous. I mean, these two, including Fred, I mean you two. I mean, why do we have professionals at a simple meeting? Like, the shade tree commission, they don't know anything about public property. They were interested in fixing the old things, the trees, the flowers. That's what their job is, and I thank them. But why do we have professionals too? The engineer and the attorney. It's not, I mean, that's one way you could cut corners. The other way is that you don't have to get new cars every three years. I mean, at Spring Lake, go to Spring Lake. Their cars are about 10 years old, maybe older. And there's so many ways you could cut corners to save a tax dollar. And let me think of another way. I think you should have a study done about how many people are working in this building. I mean, like, I, I go back to the 70s. There was only 12 people and they had typewriters. They didn't have a computer. So I think you should do a real study on, maybe you can get higher people to, just to be part-time and not paying a pension or anything else. I don't know what else they could get. But there's many ways you could cut corners, and I think you ought to start thinking about that. And the other thing I wanted to say, why do we have to give Madison Marquette any money? They're in default. What does that mean? Is that a piece of paper? Why do we have to, I think I read they were going to get $13 million. Is that right?
I'll let you finish.
13?
I'll let you finish for your three minutes.
Okay. And then the bathrooms, I think somebody quoted, are they going to be made of gold? Somebody, the $7 million. So somebody made a comment about that, and I thought it was kind of funny because $7 million for bathrooms? I don't know. Where are they going anyway? But are they going in the convention hall or, no, it's at the south side of the boardwalk. So there's lots of ways you could cut corners, many ways. So you should, but you should try because it's getting outrageous, the tax rate. And I think we need a reassessment because I've been checking out properties on all these places in Asbury. A lot of them are getting away with murder because I know what my taxes are, and I've checked three buildings.
Time's up.
For you to finish your sentence and then.
Okay. But I think you should get the town reassessed. Because it's not right.
Whoa, 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 no cross-conversations. No cross-conversations. Rita, I'm going to answer some of your questions.
Okay.
Don't always believe what you read in the newspapers. When it said we're spending $7 million for bathrooms, that was a terrible quote. The city got $7 million. The city gave no money to Madison Marquette, the state of New Jersey. So the city gave no money to Madison Marquette. So you were wrong there. As far as the gold bathrooms, there's going to be two new bathrooms, like the ones on the north end, on the south side of Convention Hall, on First Avenue and Fourth Avenue, very similar to the ones, the new ones on the north end. And no, they do not cost $7 million. $7 million includes all the decking, all the railing, all the ADA ramps and other necessities to get the boardwalk up to 100% primo. So it's not $7 million for bathrooms. Okay.
That was on Facebook.
Well, it's got to be true, John. It's got to be true. Okay, thank you.
All right. So. So I hope you like some of my comments.
We can give you, we can give you the numbers of how many people work in City Hall. Absolutely, we can give you that.
Okay.
Also, I'm just going to address the shade tree. So the irony of this is that for 17 years, I've been on the shade tree commission, and in 17 years, we've never had professionals at those meetings. But we did have professional at those meetings, Rita, when we were talking about the shrubs that you've lodged a complaint about that are next door to you, and there had to be a determination by our professionals on whether or not they were a safety hazard. Our professionals came in, presented to the commission, and we ultimately made a decision. So the only time in my 17 years on the shade tree commission are a result of shrubs that you had some questions about, and a report with professionals explaining the report.
Okay, but they were still on public property. So that's your.
We can have the professionals back, and have them back and explain it again, Rita.
No, you don't have to. He's in the traffic report.
Okay. Thank you.
On two houses.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, Dul Avenue, Asbury Park, President and Executive Director of the West Side Community Center. I'm here today, listening to all the great things happening in town, and just know on my side of town that it's not the same. My community center celebrates a birthday this month, 83 years. 1941, it was donated by the, one of the first black doctors in the area to the community to promote mental health and equity in 1941, predating the Urban League out of Newark. An important bit of history that you can't find on anything when you Google Asbury Park. I'm sitting here, listening to Sylvia Sylvia talk about the importance of Asbury Park to the framework of New Jersey, but my Asbury Park is being forgotten, left behind, just washed away. When you talk about history, my history is in the West Side Community Center. My mother's history is in the West Side Community Center. Their parents donated that to the West Side Community Center. If you talk from age 80, 83 years, so for 83 years, it's generated love, respect, doctors, lawyers, engineers, dancers, pastors, janitors, everyone went through those gates. And to see it at a space where we decide, we didn't go and say we're going to wait for somebody else after seeing decades of misdoing. We decided that out of our own hands, out of our own dollars, out of our own love of history, we're going to rebuild it. And we are severely hoping that the city does the same, after just receiving what we received the other day. We are not going away. We are putting, we're ten toes down, as we say, right? We have history, there's music, there's love there, right? It was donated by multicultural people, but it was the people of here, only few years out of, out of slavery, in the midst of Jim Crow, right? Jim Crow North, they decided to do something wonderful here, and that is history for the world, not just for a small portion of us, but it's everybody's history, and it's important to everyone. And I just want to say that I, we are here, we're not going anywhere, we're going to continue to work and move forward to make sure that it is a place for my son. He didn't get a chance to grow up there, because it was in disarray. But his son will, right, or his daughter will have a chance to be there. So that is our time. Just want to say happy birthday, West Side Community Center, since February of 1941. So thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, and I just want to say something, I know you're aware. I believe this council has done more for the West Side than any council since 1970. The West Side, especially Springwood Avenue, was knocked down in 1970. First, we built the Springwood Avenue, no, first, Interfaith and the city built the senior center in Kula. Then the park was built, and we had Renaissance build multiple units on Springwood Avenue. And Boston Way was knocked down from a 1940s project to buildings that look like condos. Interfaith has built and continues to build, they just built 10 standalone houses with garage apartments behind them, so people, low-income people can buy them and rent them out to pay their mortgage. You talk about history, Diane Shelton and her group is leading the charge to do the history of Boston, of Springwood Avenue, which the city is totally backing, supporting, where there's going to be plaques where all the stores were. So to say that we're totally neglecting the West Side, I take a little bit of disagreement with you, and I'll leave it at that.
I think you need to run that debate, I know you said that the city's neglecting it, that is happening, initiated like this, and is being forgotten.
Well, okay, okay, good enough, good enough. Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, good morning. Good evening, Moore, Mayor Moore, councilpeople. Is that red indicating the temperature in here?
I can turn down the heat, and then they all yell at me, they're cold. And you're right, it's terribly hot.
It's pretty close to what's in here, but anyway. I got here, I arrived late, so I don't know what this is, a session for commenting on a certain particular subject?
Yes, anything and everything.
Or is this in general for the?
Anything and everything. You want to say you got two minutes or whatever.
Okay, this is regarding our property taxes. And I'm a property owner, I have been for 40 years, very fortunate to be here, 40 years.
Can I get your name and address, sir?
I'm sorry?
Your name and address, for the record.
Oh, Robert Resminis.
Thank you.
601 and 603, 1st Avenue. I'm here tonight because we're all hard-working people here, we all work for a living, especially me, well, you know, I'm called defense guy, so while you know me, some of you don't. But anyway, blessed living in this city for all these years, praise the Lord. We're all hard-working people here, but there's, I don't think anybody is as hard-working in this particular time as that person sitting there in the front row in the suit, Michael Delray. He's our tax assessor, I'm sure you know him. I had met him yesterday in Freehold for my appeal on my taxes. My, my subject is the fact that we're getting taxed at an increasingly rate every year. From what I understand, the ATP program was initiated in 2014 for an audit, you know, by the state for our property valuations, and it's been continuing now for almost 10 years. And I have basically a 60% increase in my taxes the last two years, and it's getting very challenging to keep my properties, and I think I'm not the only one alone here that feels this, Mayor Moore. So my question to you and the council is, is there any way we can remedy this by basically asking the state to get off our backs and opt out of this reassessment, like some other towns, they get reassessed every eight to 10 years, which I'm fine with that. I'm also fine with, I know my properties are worth more money every year, I understand that, but again, I'm a renter, I'm, you know, a landlord, I rent. You have rent control now in, 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 on the ordinance, so I'm restricted in raising my tenants' rents, and I never try to raise my tenants' rents, but with the 60% increase, I mean, just it's, it's either I raise my rent, or I sell the building. But even though selling it, it's still at not market, because the restrictions of the rent control still apply to the new owner. So I really won't get a fair value for my property as, you know, the city has been assessing it all this time. So my question again is to you, is if you can work out some sort of plan with the state to freeze this reassessment every year and hold us for a couple of years, so we can at least catch up somehow?
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Okay, thank you.
Before you got here, Dr. Galucci brought up a similar question. Taxes are high, and taxes are going to be high again this year, and I'm not blaming it on the Board of Education, I'm blaming it on the S-2 bill that was passed in Trent. And as far as like yearly reassessments, like, I'm going to say, say we're talking about the past 10 years. The first seven years of yearly reassessments, nobody had a problem with, because the S-2 impact did not hit.
No, I understand.
Now that the S-2 impact clobbered us last year, and is going to clobber us again this year, people are like, maybe this, maybe that, will look into it, but, you know, a yearly reassessment, if somebody came in and bought a house next to me for, three years ago, bought a house next to me for $300,000, and now it's worth $1 million, I'd be ticked off, I'm paying $1 million, and he's paying $300,000. So there's good and bad, and we got to look at everything combined. We have reached out, as we told Dr. Galucci, to the Board of Education. We've suggested to them that they go to the state. Towns throughout the state have borrowed money from the state for boards of education for unique circumstances. Asbury Park has a unique circumstance. We're getting clobbered with taxes, and if we don't get some money quick, we're going to lose the fabric of the Asbury Park, Felicia talks about, we talk about, which we don't want to lose. So again, what I suggested to them, and they're going to have a meeting with Senator Gopau and people at the state level, if you give a $100 million loan to Lakewood, and you know Lakewood's never going to pay it back, can Asbury Park get a $10 million loan, so we don't have this monstrous tax increase this year, and the Board of Education can pay it back, and I'm just making this up, I'm spitballing, Board of Education can pay it back, pay it back, not forget about it, can pay it back $1 million a year over the next 10 years. We are in discussions with the Board of Education to try to figure this out. Again, I do not blame the Board of Education, I blame the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey will not tell us, will not tell you, will not tell the governor the formula for funding for education. The only thing we know for sure, part of it's enrollment, the rest of it is all a guess. So it is a, it is a mess that we're trying to work together with everybody to try to make sure we don't have another brutal tax increase this year, because what happened last year, the good landlords, like yourself, who hadn't given like 10% increase raises to their tenants every year, got clobbered, and they had to, so it's, we're working on it.
Well, who do, who are we getting in touch with? What are senators, congress, is there names that we can call and write to and ask them to help us?
Senator Gopau, Assemblywoman Donlin, and Peter Paul are our representatives, and it's state, so that's who you want to talk to. And also attend Board of Education meetings.
Okay. Because we need to get Mike Del Ray, 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 so we really don't want to strap ourselves anymore, but Mike, great job, I just got to give credit where it's due.
Thanks.
I've seen him work, and by the way, he's a very approachable person, you know, in his position, so, you know, he really is as good as Eric Gogler, maybe better, but thanks, Mike.
Thank you, I'm sure he appreciates that. Seeing nobody else, motion to close?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The participation portion is now closed.
Hold on for 30 seconds. Anybody that stayed for the presentation, if you want to get out of here quick, because we have business to go, so don't stand around, talk, make it outside, and we can go on with our business. Thank you. Hey, Joanne. Thank you.
How are you?
Been really well.
Good, you look great.
I think I didn't make you realize or understand, I wanted to make a comment or question, two questions on the board that's for short-term rentals.
Oh, you can say.
But I thought I was jumping. Is that?
So it's first reading, you have it at second reading, but honestly, you should email us the comment or question first, so we can think about it before second reading.
Where, what is it?
Email me. So, yeah, email me, just Google it, yeah, 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 email me, and I'll get it straight.
Can you please take your conversations outside? We still have a meeting to run. Quiet in chambers, please, please take all conversations outside.
Okay.
We are now on to the minutes. By the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of February 14th, 2024, do I have a motion?
Move it. Move it.
Somebody needs a second.
Need a second?
A second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
I have to abstain.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2024-133, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Um, I just want to announce, Mayor Moore is voting no on PO 2400318. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
You moved the one earlier.
That's gone.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-134, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2024 budget.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-135, resolution authorizing the purchase of food for the Black History Month event.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-136, resolution approving change order number 10 for Memorial Drive Improvements Project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-137, a resolution awarding contract to Millennium Communications Group for yearly camera support and service.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-138, resolution awarding a contract for Sunset Lake Pond Management.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-139 has been removed from tonight's agenda. We're now on to resolution 2024-140, resolution amending a contract with John Guire for snowplow repairs needed.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-141, resolution establishing fees and regulations for the 2024 beach season.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-142, resolution authorizing appointments to the zoning board of adjustment. The appointee is Natalie Passerini as alternate member number one, with a term to expire January 15th, 2026. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2020, 2024-143, resolution authorizing the fire department to apply for a training grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and the Department of Homeland Security, DHS. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-144, resolution deferring the due date for business license application fees for 2024 through April 1st, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-92, resolution authorizing professional services contract to Hackensack Meridian Team Health PC for employment exams and physicals.
I understand maybe your motion table. Are we tabled?
Yes.
Someone?
Second.
This is a motion to table.
Yeah, this is a roll call vote. Thank you. And we're on to a roll call vote to table this resolution until, until further notice.[1698.13] And we're on to a roll call vote to table this resolution until, until further notice. Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes?
Yes. It's a table.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction, I have ordinance 2024-4, Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Article 13-1300 entitled Short-Term Rentals of Park Two Rental Property of Chapter 13, Property Improvement and Neighborhood Preservation, Property Maintenance